And used for other accessory structures, so making it essentially separate from sheds, barns, things like that. This would, this is similar to how some other cities have done it as well. So we did look at a couple of other cities to see how surrounding communities handle solar. And this was consistent with another community and similar to another one as well. So staff was concerned using the applicant's requested 40 AC kilowatt limit recommended, mainly because it's difficult to manage as permits come in, along with that, as stated by the applicant and through staff due diligence, the size and technology of a 40 AC kilowatt system will change over time. As technology progresses, they can become more efficient. So it's just you'd be limiting based on something that's changing over time. So you have a moving target, so you wouldn't be able to apply it the same in 2022 as you would in 2026. So a property owner that came in today versus a property owner that came in four years down the road, they would have a different size that they'd be allowed essentially with that. So, next slide. So the proposed ordinance amendment is shown up there in the blue underlined text. So it's pretty simple because of the way the current ordinance is written, is that solar energy systems shall be considered independent from other accessory structures. So that essentially puts it in its own category aside from other accessory structures defined in the ordinance. So with that, the planning commission has three options. You can recommend allowing solar energy independent from other structures as recommended by staff. You can direct staff to amend the ordinances requested by the applicant to regulate based on the AC kilowatt size. Or you can recommend no change of the current ordinance or anywhere in between those three options. With zoning ordinance amendments, the discretion for the planning commission is at the highest that it can be. So feel free to make recommendations and suggestions. With that, if you, this is a public hearing tonight, so we will need to open a public hearing and take testimony for anyone, well, no one's present here, but there might be people present online, and then the applicant is online as well to answer questions if they provide comment. So then the motion would be to recommend adopting the ordinance and the findings of fact.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Shea. All right, at this time then, we'll open up the public hearing. And being that there is no one in the audience, is there anyone online?
Sure, anyone joining us online that wants to speak for the public hearing can press star nine if they're joining us by phone. And if you're joining us by tablet, smartphone, or computer, you can press reactions and then raise your hand. Chair, at this moment, no one's raising their hand. We could wait a couple seconds here, see if anyone else. No one is continuing to raise their hand, so I think we can close the public hearing if you're comfortable with that.
Actually, at this point, if the applicant would like to say a few words or give a presentation, why don't we take that in the open or the public hearing portion?
Patrick, if you're available, we could take any comments that you might have.
If you want to.
We can, yes.
If I have any issues here, can I tell you real quick?
Yes.
Perfect, thanks. My name is Patrick Farm, and I'm here to speak energy. The company is applying on behalf of the property owners that kind of treat this request. We really appreciate the board hearing application and first we consider the timing to review this. And we're really happy to see that this report claims they can have different options out sort of allow for more solar, it's part of the 2040 growth plan, and we just feel like it's kind of natural for development for the foreseeable future. Just one note, we didn't disagree with the staff's recommendation to treat solar as an accessory structure. And we really do feel that this is a step in the right direction, and it's something that more than residents would be requesting. We do, however, feel that maintaining the square footage, maintaining a system size based off of the kilowatt size of the system rather than the square footage is more appropriate. For one, it naturally closes an upper limit for the actual square footage of the grounds around the systems, in the sense that as solar panels become more efficient, there will be less square footage required to maintain the same kilowatt system size. And in a similar way, I thought, the measuring systems, and why each of their kilowatts is really industry standard on how you size a system, they really don't go off the square footage. So bringing the ordinance more in line with the technology applies to make sense in that regard as well. So these are our main comments, but we have to answer any questions you might have running the inside, and some of the technology. Go for it.
Okay, great. Sir, I didn't get your last name.
My last name is Farm.
Farm. Okay, thank you. Mr. Farm, if you could, I'm sure you'll continue to wait online. What I'd like to do now is we're going to close the public hearing, and then through our discussion, I know I have a few questions for you, so if you'll stick, stay on and make yourself available, that'd be greatly appreciated, but we'll handle that outside of the public hearing, if that's okay.
Hearing.
Okay, great. All right, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Farm, I got a little bit of math for you. And I'm not very good at this, I'm not an electrical engineer. But I, and honestly, I don't know why I kind of went into this. My wife woke up at about 1:00 in the morning, saw me down here doing all this math, looking at websites, and she's like, you should really go to bed. And I said, this is way too confusing and interesting nonetheless, so I'm going to give this thing a whirl. Because I'm intrigued by some of the parts of your narrative that talked about the efficiency. And then I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, what is a 40 kilowatt, you know, solar array capable of doing? So let me just start out by saying, in your report, you said that a solar array can get 40 kilowatts on about 3,400 square feet, is that correct?
Yes, with the current panel wattage used, yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, now, in the application, and at least from the prior permit plan, there is 4,000 square feet of solar array area. Can you explain the difference? That's 600 square feet, what am I missing? Now, again, and I don't know, you referenced the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission as saying that they allow 40 kilowatt for residential. Can a residential go beyond that? Or, I mean, is that a standard? Is it something they would prefer? How does, how does the 40 kilowatt, you know, sit in place of what your client is attempting to do, but yet what your narrative is saying?
That's a good question. So 40 kilowatts is basically a major milestone, a major tier for system sizes across the state, since mandated by the state tariff. So 40 kilowatts, yeah, a customer could potentially go beyond that, but if the folks from Redhennepin or some of the audience, they would also tell us the same thing, that 40 kilowatts and up, basically customers would be pushed into a larger tier, where they'd have to deal with basically more, more red tape, a lot more, they'd deal not necessarily with just, you know, the local utility, but they may even have to deal with RSTO and some larger transmission networks around the Midwest and beyond. So 40 kilowatts is usually the upper limit for what's considered residential or small commercial sized systems by the state of Minnesota.
Okay. Now, our professional staff report argued that using the square, you know, the accessory square footage, then they'd have to all of a sudden determine what brand or model and the size, and I get all that, it makes perfect sense. So in, in your client's case, when you say, when you say then that 40 kilowatts could be done in 3,400 square feet, is your client, you know, suggesting, are they using a different system that requires 4,000 square feet then?
So the panel wattage, which determines the, well, basically two ways to measure a system size, is the AC or direct current size, and the AC size, which is the 40 kW size that we're talking about. It is kind of convoluted, but the DC system size is what, is how you measure the total of all the panels, and the panels are what accounts for the square footage, of course. Whereas the AC main plate is an electrical limitation, but not necessarily in square footage. And I guess the meaning is kind of convoluted, sorry, I don't know if I'm pronouncing the best way of describing that, but 40 KW AC would typically require, you know, like I said, between 3,400 and 4,000 square feet of ground space as it currently stands.
Okay, all right. Now, and the reason I'm going through this math, sir, is because changing this amendment to allow, you know, this amenity to produce, you know, certain amounts, it's always going to come down to some neighbor or something that's, you know, going to, going to be, let's just say, object to this kind of stuff. But you make a point about saying that the efficiency is driving down the actual size. So if you would, follow me here with my math, and I'm going to skip through all the specifics. But when you say 40 kilowatts over 3,400 square feet, that breaks down to about 11.8 watts per square foot. Does that sound about right?
I'll do a little math when I say it really quick.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm getting, yeah, roughly, yeah, roughly.
Okay. So in your statement then, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to challenge your math on this, or, I'm trying to foresee in the future how much reduction we might expect if this is something that is going to be around for 20 years before it gets changed. And I do believe that, you know, the alternative energy will be an increasing thing in our city, as it probably will everywhere. So following that math, if you say then that in the last three years, the area has been reduced by 900 square feet, and I divide that by the 11.8 watts, I get 76.3 square Is what the reduction was in the square footage. Or, maybe I can't even read my own math. But then I took the 76.3, divided that by three years, so I get a reduction in area of about 25 square feet a year. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right, yeah. Basically, it's a function of the panel wattage. With the same surface area on a panel, can produce more watts. And year over year, we're seeing wattages go up by anywhere between 5 to 15 watts on average. So basically, sort of background, yes. We'll see anywhere between 5 and let's say 10 square feet year over year of required square footage going down.
Okay. And so if, if typically the wattages are increasing in efficiency, 5 to 15 watts per year, it, we're not talking like, well, you know, today it costs, you know, it takes 3,400 square feet, and in 10 years, it's only going to take half of that. That's, that's not the type of efficiency increases we can expect in, in the size of, barring some new technology, would that be fair?
Yeah, that's fair. It's definitely, it's definitely gradual and incremental, unless there's some major breakthrough, you know, we expect it to be halves, you know, in the next five or 10 years, but it'll definitely go down.
Okay. So then I got into the idea of trying to understand exactly what 40 kilowatts of solar power does. And now, your client has stated in their narrative that they have upgraded their panel to 400 amps. Now, most of, you know, my house is 26 years old, I have a 200 amp panel, and as I'm sure most of my neighbors probably do. And with that, we can power our pole buildings and, you know, 3,000 to, you know, 8,000 square foot homes. But I wanted to understand exactly what that would do, you know, how much, how much if I, if I put one of these 40 kilowatts, what would I be able to do? And they, so online, I saw they use a PE of .5, and they use a voltage of 110. And so on a DC, you get 363 amps. On an AC single-phase I, you get 727 amps. On an AC three-phase line-to-line, you get 420 amps. And an AC three-phase line-to-neutral, you get 242 amps. So I'm just going to take a wild guess here, but this 40 kilowatt solar array can produce more power than what my house has, assuming that my house, and again, I don't know much about electrical stuff, but I would assume a normal single-family house would be a three-phase line-to-neutral?
Well, very close, but I, it's a, the majority of residences will be single-phase, so 120, 240 volt services.
Okay.
So a system of this size, and this is kind of, when it's integrated so easily, is that the solar matches the average, or the voltage, I should say, of the service it's supplying. So the solar gets converted from AC to AC, and it will match that single-phase service at the house, so it will be more greater stability, and it has to, has to work that way so it can feed into the house and then back into the grid if it makes it through.
Okay. So enough with the math, but the bottom line is, a 4,000 square foot solar array or 3,400 could basically produce all the electricity a normal house. I don't, I don't want to presume anything with your client, but it sounds like they have electrified their house and they have, let's just say, greater than average electrical demand or need. So with that being said, in a typical home, if somebody wanted to go completely solar, would they need 40 kilowatts?
A typical home, I would say no, and I can't say, and that's for, you know, nationwide. If the land driver is, you know, doesn't fit the person's, what the property uses, because everyone has different usage profiles.
Yep.
So really, it does come down to the house owner itself.
Okay. Because I, you know, I think it, yeah, I'm trying to guess here, how many people in our community here living in Minnesota would venture to go out and invest in a 40 kilowatt system if they wanted to completely become energy independent from, you know, Redhennepin, who serves most of our community, if not all of it? I think, let me ask you about the height, real briefly. In some of the, in some of the comparable community guidelines, I saw one community talk about that they can't exceed 16 feet in height. In your narrative, you've got nine feet, two inches. I think height, obviously, in, in a neighbor-to-neighbor situation, would, would probably be one of the bigger obstacles to, one, its ability to shield, we can't build fences that tall, and it seems maybe somewhat counterproductive to build, you know, or plant trees and everything around it to give it shade when you're trying to put it in an open spot. But, you know, every, every such, every single lot is going to be a little bit different. The nine feet, two inches, is this something, is this, is this unique just to the specific system that you are installing or you hope to install there? Or is, is, can these things get to be 16 feet tall in the air?
16 feet would be, would be a stretch, though the measurement, the nine foot two that you're referencing, that's specific to the manufacturer that we, that we work with, that we install our rack and floor for soon. And that's pretty, pretty close to what you'll see across all those manufacturers. Personally, I haven't, you know, seen a lot of systems, when I do, I haven't seen any system that are, are 16 feet tall, unless they're a totally different type of architecture, which, which, yeah, no, it's, unless they're very common, if ever used.
Okay. And, and of course, as somebody who's in the business of installing these things, you know, we have a lot of, obviously, owners here in Corcoran that own acreage, but the, the new development, of course, is for much smaller lots. Do you see a lot of people putting up ground-mounted solar in a backyard of a lot that's 45, 50 feet wide?
Well, no, to be honest, I've only had one project myself, and that's been done. We're the different cities that own solar, but 95% of the time, when we do these types of projects, they're around, you know, at least way up to two acres minimum.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's all I had. Anybody else on the commission? Do you have any questions for him or for the staff?
Okay, so we're, we're ending that, or without questions, we still have our discussion, correct?
Right.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I understand where we are. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I just had a question for staff to clarify, because I get the, you like the conformity or the uniformity of being able to communicate to the residents. But if he is saying that every, there's this incremental advancement in each panel, wouldn't setting it at a kilowatt then over time reduce the land that's thus allowed through an ordinance if we went with a kilowattage instead of a square footage? I mean, ultimately, there are, there's lots of restrictions, like on, on what size you can have, or what the electric company will even allow you to feed back into the system after you use. So, so it's, I don't see that it would be super relevant if we did square footage and then the panels got super efficient. It's not like people could produce three times, you know, 40 kilowatts. But do you see what I'm saying? Like, if we just went with a kilowatt, and then it's reducing in its size over, or its efficiency, it's increasing in its efficiency, wouldn't it just ultimately reduce in its size?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Brumman. You are correct, yeah. So the, the AC kilowatt, you know, while if we said 30 or 40 or whatever we say, the square footage that would require to install that system year over year will become smaller. So you go from, say, just, I'm throwing out numbers, but like 3,000, then it might be 2,950, then 2,900, so the size would reduce. But by the same logic, if we allow 1,600 square feet on a given lot, year over year, they're going to be able to install a higher capacity system because the technology's there.
Right.
Whereas when we say square footage, staff can communicate that effectively to residents, but when we say AC kilowatt size, we don't know what manufacturer they're looking at or what model, or if it's this year or next year. And then if we give them information and they come back a year later, it may have changed.
Sure.
So it's just easier to communicate that way. And it's essentially doing the same thing, where every year, they're going to get a little bit more because it's going to become more efficient.
Or arguably, they're just capped by the electric company.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was curious with the, because I, it does seem like the recommendation makes sense to me logically to, because, especially if there is a limit before you hit additional regulations with the 40 kilowatts, then realistically, I'll maximize what I can without making my lot, I'm on a third acre, let's say, and I want to put my whole backyard because I'm under 40 kilowatts, that, we don't want that either, I don't think. So I think there's got to, almost we have to do this, I think, in my opinion. I'm curious with the, with the proposal for this, removing the accessory structures, does that allow this applicant to get the system they were hoping to get?
They can't get quite there. So they're on 2.54 acres, which allows, can you scroll to the slide?
1,656.
I put the table in there because I was never going to remember.
Oh.
But it's, yeah, so 1,656 square feet, so it's not, it's going to be about half of what they're proposing. So currently, you want to install a 40 kilowatt system, you'd need to have, you know, on the minimum acre, or size that the applicant gave, you'd need about 8.1 acres of land to be able to install 40 kilowatt. But every year, that'll get smaller.
Right, 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 right. So unless we wanted to allow even greater space taken in a yard for solar, and still ignore that, I mean, I guess that's still another option, but what you're recommending, yeah, that makes sense. I think that was my only.
Could discuss and decide that this accessory structure size isn't sufficient for solar, and that you want to, you know, 1.2, 1.5 times the allowed accessory certain, I mean, we staff can work with you to draft, you know, from your recommendation, if that's the direction you want to go.
Well, I understand that, you know, this is a, I understand the, the need for the change in the methodology, I think it's correct, but, you know, I mean, who are we kidding? We could throw numbers out and square footages and, and sizes all day long, and you're never going to get it right, because you don't have any idea what kind of problems this is going to arise in the future, you know, and, and so, I mean, and even in this own application, I mean, you know, here it says, rather than the 3,085 square feet they requested as part of their initial application, but their initial application shows solar arrays of 4,000 square feet. You know, so I mean, we're talking 1,000 square feet. And when it comes to square footage of pole buildings, which we were treating this like, 1,000 square feet's a lot. And, and so the, the, ultimately, what we decide, I think, would we all agree that maybe we, we should not be adding a pole building and a solar array as one in determining what your maximum. I agree that they need to be changed separately. The staff report is saying, if you get, if you get 2,000 square feet based upon your lot size for a pole building, you get 2,000 square feet of, of solar panel surface area. It's a simple, down-and-dirty, you know, equivalence, but is that the right? I mean, if you want to, if you want to go completely off the grid from Redhennepin, that's not going to get you there.
And we are speaking strictly about ground mounted, so they still have the allowance to do roof mounted.
Roof mounted. Well, I understand that, and, you know.
So the applicant.
You know, they could, they could put a, they could put a generator, you know, I mean.
If they're with the ground mounted, they can certainly do roof-mounted panels to then get to the 40 kilowatt if that's what their desired mark is.
Yeah.
Yeah, or what if, what if, because in that case, if I had a pole barn, 1,600 square feet, and I can also have 1,600 square feet of ground mounted, but if I don't have a pole barn, can I use 3,200 square, as long as, I can't make a 3,200 square foot pole barn, but could I, would we allow a 3,200 square foot solar array? Maybe that would be okay.
Sounds permissible, but.
No, not, not the way it's written, but maybe that would be, if we want to encourage it, hey, you don't have a pole barn, you could cover 3,200 square feet of your property, a pole barn and an array, but you can't just have 3,200 square, square foot of an array. We, this wouldn't allow that. Maybe, maybe that would be okay if we want to encourage solar. I'm just throwing it out as an idea.
But also, people could just come and apply for a variance, right? Like, if for some reason, they, we set the standard as the square footage separate from the accessory structure, and for some reason, like, that didn't fulfill.
Variance rules, though, right?
I'm just saying. I'm just saying, it's not like it's, you know, correct, but.
It'd be hard to justify.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public discussion.
Can we do that?
Oh, do.
I think we did do that.
We have one, uh, motion to close the public. We, we have a motion.
Oh, are we, is this?
We closed it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Is this our discussion?
This is our discussion.
Heck, where am I?
You're still becking that last one.
Yeah, I have, I have some comments, if I may. Please do. So, um, I do find staff's report on this to be compelling. Thank you. Um, I believe that changing the metric for solar panels seems extreme, and it may have unintended consequences. Basically, as of today, this proposal would mean that any homeowner could put in a not insignificant 3,400 square feet of solar paneling, whether they're on 20 acres or one acre. 3,400 square feet is about the, uh, current limit for an eight acre property. What about technology changing such that if we incorporate the limit to be 40 kilowatts, that maybe there will be an improved system of, say, 60 kilowatts, the size of a, of a tabletop? Now, it's a hypothetical, but imagine a 60 kilowatt system that fits into the current rules based on square footage. That system would not be allowed because it is not 40 kilowatts. In that situation, your ask, the applicant's ask, uh, may have unintended, uh, consequence for their position too. Uh, now frankly, I do not see that the city has an interest in how much electricity their panel generates. I can see why the Public Utilities Commission has an interest in that, uh, it's tied into their systems, but I do not see why the amount of power of a solar panel is important to the City of Corcoran. What is the city going to do, come check to make sure that it's 40 kilowatts and not 60? The city, uh, does have an interest, though, in how the thing looks. And that's what the current rule is already designed to do. It seems like the fact that solar panels are getting smaller means that our current metric, square footage, is better for administration, but also better for consumers as the technology progresses. Now, for this specific property, which is about 2.4 acres, they're proposing about double the solar, uh, than what is currently permitted. Staff's recommendation to change the code, uh, the way it does, by separating solar panels from the total accessory structure allowance, doesn't seem to fix the applicant's problem. Uh, I do not think that this commission should get in the habit of rewriting its code for no reason. The applicant didn't ask for the change recommended by staff. Staff took that effort upon itself. It doesn't solve their problem, and I think that it's, uh, better to have rules that stay rules unless there is a monumental justification for changing them. I move to keep the status quo, and therefore, I move to keep our code as currently written.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Shulak, you've been awfully quiet down there today. Um, do you have anything to chime in on this?
No, I have, I have no questions. I'm just hoping for the, the success of the whole solar industry.
Yeah.
And I think it can benefit all of us in so many different ways.
Yeah.
If I could ask a question, kind of on, Commissioner Landerman here. So isn't, I, I, I just kind of assume that we're always kind of, I don't know, people are, staff are always looking at code and evaluating and recommending changes? Is that not the case? Or, I mean, I guess per, kind of per his, his comments?
Well, staff certainly has a list. This has been on our list for a while to reevaluate this. Uh, but this, uh, as Commissioner Landerman said, this is a request from, uh, the solar company, uh, and we do not recommend approval of their request, uh, which is why we gave you options, one of which is, the option we're recommending is the option we've been wanting to bring forward anyway.
So because of the request, you actually did the evaluation and said, ah, you know what, this is what we, you know, I guess it's bumping up on the list.
Correct.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
What about, um, can, can somebody put a solar array on, uh, agricultural field that is not a residential property?
No, uh, uh, solar is an accessory use, so you have to have a principal structure to have the accessory structure. That's the solar array.
Okay.
I guess potentially, yeah, if, if, let's say the field, the agricultural field is next door or something, and could they run a line to it?
If you had a, if you had a farmstead and you had the farm field next door with an accessory structure on that farmstead, which we do have some of those, you could do that on that, um, uh, structure.
Right.
You could do it as a principal use. We used to allow community gardens. We have two community solar gardens in Corcoran, and we no longer allow that, which was solar for principal use.
But under the current things, I'm just saying, if you had a, a, a residential lot, one acre, but then you had the farm field surrounding it, right? Um, that was more than 10 acres. So on the one acre, you can't put in much of a solar array. And you like your trees and your cover. But guess what? That farm field out there is wide open, and you could put the maximum out there, which was 3,900 and...
69.
3, 3969 square feet. Uh, and anything greater than that has to be through a condition use permit. So my question is, is could, could somebody then, uh, under the proposal, um, of separating them out, they could still, could you put it on, on a parcel of land that had no house on it, but it was still part of the, you know, it was an, an adjacent lot to the house?
I would have to double, I'm looking at the code right now quickly as we're looking at. I don't think you can. I think it's different from the pole barn. So if I have a farmstead, um, and then I have the farmland next to it, I have the farmhouse on one acre and the farm next to it, I can, if I'm actively farming that, I can put a pole barn there. But if I just have a house and I have an outlot next to me, I cannot. I don't think you can do that for this solar either.
Yeah, if I could build it. But I could, if I could build it big enough, I could sell solar power to my neighbor. Right?
Right. But you could build a building and throw the solar power, solar panels on top of it, and then that'd be okay.
All right. So, um.
You're full of solutions.
All right, well, um.
That's funny.
Okay, so, again, there's three, um, there's three recommendations, uh, suggested by, uh, the report. Move forward with the staff recommendation, uh, to be, uh, to allow solar energy independent of accessory structure. Move forward with the applicant recommendation to regulate based on AC kilowatt size. I don't think there's an appetite for that. And then, of course, no change, uh, to the current ordinance. Part of me says I agree with the, the, you know, option one, as I've already stated. I think that makes sense, but at what square foot, you know, I, I just, I can't come to grips with, with that without further review, more information. Uh, it's a, I mean, look at all the math I went through just to understand what, you know, what, what does 40 kilowatts do, you know? Um, and so, the other, uh, option, at, at least maybe in the interim for right now, is to, uh, just say, um, we recommend to the city council no change at all. So what does everybody else think?
Sorry, and you mean with a, and then reevaluate it to see if this is really the right numbers or?
Well, I, you know, if we recommend not, not to change the, amend the ordinance, you know, we're all looking to make more efficient time of our use, so it, it'll stand as is until it comes a point where the issue comes up again as a priority to the city council or we have another issue, or we have another application to change it from a, you know, from an owner or an agent.
I would make a recommendation to go with, uh, staff's proposal.
I would second that. I, I, with the proposal to, to make the changes. Because they've done the, in my opinion is they've done the evaluation, they, they took it, they went and looked at it in other cities, what their recommendations are, it was on their list, it just hadn't bumped up to priority. But now they've done it, so why waste the, the effort that they put into it? That's my, that seems to be what I think.
Well, I, I mean, the one good thing about, you know, certainly the logic behind the staff recommendation is the smaller lot you got, the smaller the array you're going to build.
Right.
Uh, which means probably less in terms of, uh, complaints with neighbors.
Yeah.
And everything else.
Yeah.
Um, though, I, I got to ask you, um, Kendra, what, I, I mean, is this, is there something that is, you know, we, we all think of this in terms of our rural, you know, community. But what is, what is the ramifications of change in this for our developed?
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, as, uh, the applicant noted, I don't, we don't, we have not seen a lot of requests for urban areas. Where I do see them in other communities is, uh, urban lots choose rooftop solar.
Yeah.
They don't give up the little bit of green space they have for the ground mounted.
Okay. And rooftop solar is allowed in our current urban.
In all of our districts.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, and I think that's what he said, 95, I mean, almost all of them, I think, or maybe that's somebody's name, but all, almost all of them are roof, most people, I've never known anybody to do one of these before, because you just put them on your, I was showing, here, my cousin just got it this week.
Oh.
On his roof in, in Elk River.
Oh, my.
Yeah, he was so happy. Yeah.
Not by my house.
Is it? Oh, I don't know. Trout Lake? Trot Lake?
Okay, um.
So happy.
All right, well, uh, so it sounds like we, um, why don't we go forward? Is there a recommendation, uh, to?
We have a motion in a second.
And a second, I guess, so.
Who made the original motion?
Corinne.
I said I, yeah, I mean, it can go.
And I seconded it. I seconded.
I heard what you said, I heard you seconded.
And I seconded it.
Well, they're not really making an official motion.
Okay.
Um, I thought you were just stating your preference for what option. Um, so why don't we just, for the record, why don't you go ahead and restate your motion?
I will make a motion to support staff's findings.
And I will second that.
All right, so we have a second. Any further discussion?
I, I would.
And well, what, and, and let's just say, so that would be to, um, go with option one.
Option one.
To make the changes, yep, to the, correct, option one.
Okay. Mr. Landerman?
I just want to say, I think rules should be rules, and they should stay that way unless there is a significant justification for changing them.
I, I will never say that one taxpayer is significant justification, um, but I, I see, I see some limitations to, I, I mean, in this situation, if I wanted to put a solar array, I couldn't, even though I have 20 acres. I couldn't do it because I already have a pole building. And, and, and in, in a, in a world that's continually to go greener and greener, I think that's, that's a failure of, of a good, sound policy for those people that want to do it. So I'll take the other side of that argument. All right, so we have a motion and a second to recommend, uh, to the city council to, uh, move forward with staff recommendations to allow solar energy independent from other accessory structures. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Um, all right. Let's see, we are now on item eight, planning project update. I wanted to, I just only have one quick question, and that happens to deal with item number And that would be the Pioneer Trail Industrial Park. And as I read this early, early, early this morning, um, I said, I read, "As a developer has refined the plans, they are requesting a second council review as they are now requesting PUD approval for reduced setbacks." I really, I could go back and look at this meeting, and I'd love to see that thing, but can somebody please tell me why, how a storage facility fits into a PUD necessity?
That may be in the council update.
Okay. All right, I mean, I just, it, we, I don't think we could build a telephone booth in this city without doing a PUD. Uh, it's just, it's driving me crazy. And I, I saw that, because I saw the initial one, and I don't remember a PUD, you know, element to it.
Well, the initial one in 2005, or the, or the.
No, this is the one, this is the new one on Highway 55.
It was approved in 2005, United Properties did a similar project, and, uh, the same issues are arising related to setbacks to 55 because of where the frontage road comes in. That's the reason for the PUD. The PUD is sort of unrelated to the mini storage, but I think that may be part of the council.
Oh, yeah, you're right, because they do have other, yeah, they have warehouse and commercial, yeah. Okay, well, I just, anyway, uh, we'll wait for that. Anybody else? No?
No.
Okay. Um, there was, I think somebody had mentioned to me that in the upcoming months, we've got a pretty heavy schedule.
We do.
Uh, I think this was supposed to be one of those months. Is there another one coming up next month or?
I think that April is probably the heaviest we're seeing so far. Right now, there is a potential for nine, or nine, eight or nine.
Yeah.
They're not all public hearings.
No, there are several final plat, final PUD.
Oh, our favorite.
Okay. All right.
So, Michael, do I?
There's nothing we can do, let's talk about that.
Can I ask a, a question? I, I notice for the past two months now, I'm not getting my packet until late Friday night.
Okay.
And I don't mind it on thin months.
Sure.
Okay, but I'd like at least a week to review, you know, agendas like tonight's, you know, I, I still have a job I have to do nine to five. So is, is there some rea, I mean, I think, you know, it shouldn't be too much to ask if we can get a full week.
Are they, are they accessible online?
No.
They're not access, generally accessible online before that.
No.
We just, we likely have to change a little bit of our staff process and timelines in order to do that.
And, and, and did you get my email, the Wright-Hennepin, uh, paperwork online, that link?
Yes.
Did not work, so none of my neighbors could look at tonight's packet. And I sent an email to you and all city council members, making them aware of that.
Yeah.
Because I would have thought maybe that's a violation of some.
So.
Public disclosure.
So, uh, there's not a requirement to have your, uh, agendas online?
Okay.
Um, you have to have a copy available here at, at City Hall.
Okay. But it's still good practice.
But we do try, we try to do our best to have that, um, on there. And I know, I thought Natalie had responded.
I didn't, I didn't see any response. So I just wanted to make you aware that when I tried to download it, I got prompted for username and password. That was, that was the only project that required that.
We can certainly look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, let's move on to eight B, uh, city council report, uh, council member, Baron Camp.
Hey, guys. Thank you.
What's happening?
Tonight, um, a lot of great work, um, council member, or Commissioner Landerman. Thank you for digging in and doing that. Again, there seems to be a communication issue on the one case of the three attorneys, and the one attorney, they're not getting contacted or whatever, so.
Well, I'm just saying, if I could just comment on that, okay? I've made comments about our code in the past.
No.
And I don't think I've ever been proven wrong. And I would just ask that my comments be taken seriously, and I don't like hearing, well, the city attorney says it's okay. Well, I'd like to hear that from him, and I'm happy to debate it.
Understood. Thank you. You guys had questions on the PUD down of Highway 55 and such. That setback is all related to Highway 55. That whole development or that whole proposal, they would be bringing in their own sewer, they would be taking care of their own water and those kind of things. And it was just, it was just a sketch plan PUD right now, with input from us. So my thing, I was going to tell you, is at some point, you guys will start seeing those things. It was just a sketch plan, PUD. Am I saying that right, Kendra? Cool. Another sketch plan PUD possibly is, possibly, we liked it, was the Corcoran Farms. And that brings up a whole bunch of questions. That's on Larkin Road, and it's west of the proposed substation. But it's the very far edge of the industrial park property that we've already identified in our complaint, if that makes sense. Okay? There's, as Wright Hennepin said, there's complications related to the gas pipeline and the easements. We talked about traffic at Larkin intersection, Larkin and 116, the road being able to handle it, some textures, those kind of things. But the concept, the sketch plan, we all agreed, would fit into that. And they're going to start working on that now. But again, it's 67 acres, 60-some acres.
This is, this is at the west end of Larkin?
That's what, yeah.
Very far west of Larkin, but it's like Jessica's going to pull up the map. It's a very far western identified industrial park area.
Oh, okay. I thought you were like going all the way down.
Well, on the other substation.
I don't think, I don't think we have an industrial park down there yet, but, hey.
There's access to Larkin. There was conversation about access to County Road 10, excuse me, 50.
50, yeah.
And those kind of things, so that's out there.
It would be south of the bat, of the, excuse me, south of the one that's going in on 10, essentially, right? Like a little bit southwest of the one on the other side of the Corcoran City Park.
Yeah, so.
Okay, yeah.
Pass, like, south of the industrial, but, yeah.
She'll pull that up, we'll jump to that, there we go.
This is the property we're talking about, correct?
Yep. So if you remember, right across from the park, used to be an electric company there. It's just the frontage of the houses there. There's a little bit of a metal on the very north end, but then most, all of the access would come off of Larkin with a safety, just an emergency access off of 10. But then, again, a little bit more thoughts on a north-south connection from, from, excuse me, 50 to Larkin, not 10.
How are they tying into city water, city sewer?
It's in the industrial park now.
Okay.
So this is the one that next to, a single-family residence?
On the west side.
On the east side?
And then.
It looks like it has like an old city hall building on it?
No, there's nothing on this site.
There's nothing, okay, I'm thinking of something.
A little bit further east of it.
Yeah, okay. How is that zoned?
It's zoned industrial.
Well, why doesn't Wright Hennepin seize that land?
Because they don't want that.
Exactly.
Because it's, is it inconvenient?
Again, I think they spoke to it, Mark, the, the gas line, the communication lines and that easement, it was probably questionable, but it could have been one of the.
But that's a big property.
60-some acres, and the concept, it was pretty much covered by the five buildings?
Five buildings.
Five buildings, parking, all of those things.
I'm just saying, if you're going to seize property.
If they're listing.
This is already zoned.
It might be a whole other conversation for them.
It's already zoned.
Back from last year was that, because we had suggested, we know where there was industrial area that didn't have anything on it, and they pushed back very hard that going down Larkin was either impractical or impossible, out of the accuracy of that.
Because it's inconvenient and too inexpensive, or too expensive, that's not justification for seizing someone else's land in a residential zone.
Right.
Couple more things, sanctuaries, the landscape variance we approved. It gets our downtown started, but I still had a hard time chewing on that. I'd like, the calculations and stuff, I think it's, we can look at quickly what calculations would make what the current ordinance that they're, or the current landscape they're going to have is going to be a good thing. We also approved final plat of Bellwether Seventh Edition, so that was just one of those things we did. A big thing that I wanted to tell everybody real quick was we, I asked a question, we are on plan for the whole water tower, water treatment, those kind of things. Staff and everybody says we're going down the right path, things are going good, and it should align with that moratorium that we put in place that'll expire sometime in June.
Could I ask a question about that?
Sure.
How are they performing maintenance? Is this done remotely over the internet? Because Blaine had their water processing plant attacked twice. In the middle of winter.
They are doing really good at this, and I think they've noted that as far as the plans and such. I believe I had a conversation with one of the folks that were doing this on that, and they're.
Like, is there going to be a security assessment into the water processing plant? Because I, for one, I don't think we should pay for this if our residents are going to be without water for three weeks because of some cyber attack against our water processing plant. Talk to Blaine. It happened to them twice, once in January, once in February, and there was a law enforcement investigation into that, and that was a cyber attack. So I'm just saying, I hear oftentimes, oh, we're secure. Okay, we'll see.
We'll take that under advisement.
I'm just saying, I would, I would like to know details on what steps they're taking to secure the water processing plant.
We'll ask that question. But again, I think another one that, the thing that makes me confident about it is hooking up, daisy chaining in with Maple Grove and such, and I know that system is extremely robust and such, and we'd have that backup, they would have our backup, it would all be intertwined, so.
And we are connected on the south to the Dyna as well. So there is some additional connections.
It's a good point, but it's, it's a busy thing, but we're on track. The MS4 ordinance amendment went through also, which was pretty self-explanatory. You guys got any questions for me?
Number seven, is that solved by the changes that were approved tonight, or is that something separate? It's just, it just seems like another ground-mounted solar issue is number seven. Sorry for people who packed up. It just says that they've submitted a request for an amendment to allow a larger ground-mounted solar, and it's coming. And I'm just wondering, is that impacted by the decision made tonight?
That is the action you had tonight.
Yeah, I thought their last name was different, but thank you.
I got a question, I got a question about that, I'm sorry, but the whole solar farm over off of 19 and 50, that's Wright Hennepin, that?
Those are at South.
That's a solar energy?
The two, seen in any solar gardens that we do have.
Yeah, lone or is it swan?
So that's corporation, and that was all PUD, what was that?
I don't remember exactly what. Maybe it's his last name.
But it was ordinance.
I think so.
Community solar.
Yeah, very swan, so it's his last name.
And so that's why.
That was my only question.
Councilor Baron Camp, on the last item of the report, liquor license amendment noise waiver, is that from Rodeo?
That was Rodeo for the stanchion.
Okay.
If you remember a couple.
Wait, Rodeo for the stanchion?
During the rodeo, they want to have, they want to have a band outside in their parking
lot.
They do.
They've done that a few times in the past, but we, we agreed with, but I think the time, we're still wondering on the time and stuff. Go ahead, Jessica.
They, we approved until midnight, just based on what we had done for some other projects. So they, we do have a liquor license that goes till 1:00 a.m., and they can be outside, but no.
We'll have to look by these tests. It'll be interesting, it's going to be a learning moment, and my, it's kind of what I said with Rush Creek Properties and stuff going in place on the north side of 10 there at that intersection. It's going to be a learning event. But we can have, we can have some fun this summer during the rodeo.
What do you say you and I load up our horses, put on our chaps and our boots, you and I will ride to the stanchion.
Let's go, man.
All right.
No problem.
I like it. Okay, any other city council report questions or comments? All right, let's go on to any other business, eight C. Okay. Item nine, liaison calendar, does anybody see any conflicts with, so Commissioner Brummond, you are up on the 10th, I'm on the 24th, and Mr. Lanterman, you are on the 14th. Is there anybody that needs to change these immediate ones?
Nope.
Okay, good, we're all good to go. All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yes, you do.
Okay, second?
I will second.
All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, closed? All right, this means closed.
There's nothing stopped.
No, that's disgusting. I don't want to go.